Okay. Everyone, welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Berkeley Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, June 25th. Can everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. McLean, could you please call the roll?
Buckler.
Present.
Kempner.
Here.
Murad.
Present.
Patterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Shadle.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Trotto.
Here.
Kapalansky.
Here.
Okay, next up, we'll have approval of the agenda, and I'll just note that the public hearing and rezoning requests that are originally scheduled for this evening have been postponed. So, does anyone have any changes to the agenda or motions to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. McLean?
Buckler.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
Murad.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Kapalansky.
Yes.
Moving on to the minutes from the May 28 meeting, any changes to the minutes from anyone? If there's no changes, any motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
There you go. Mr. McLean?
Kempner.
Yes.
Murad.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Kapalansky.
Yes.
Okay, it looks like for communications, we received the latest edition of the Michigan, excuse me, Michigan Planner Magazine. Any other communications to share, Mr. McLean?
None at this time. I did include just a short memo under item number two, which is just a memo to Planning Commission, and I copied ZBA just to kind of give them some background on what the developers for the Los Let Project have been talking about and the path they're looking to go.
Thank you for that. Okay, that brings us to citizen comments. Any citizens that have comments for items that are not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. I ask you to sign in on the sign-in sheet there, next to Councilmember Gavin. As a reminder, the Planning Commission will not engage you in any discussion, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address and try to keep your comments to four minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda?
Charles Terrill, 1209 Columbia in Berkeley. The last chat with Matt session, there were several questions about the design overlay, which this commission has already approved and passed on for council approval. There were several questions, and each was met with basically, staff is making changes. Is this council aware, is this commission aware, that staff is making changes to something that you've already approved? And if changes are made, my assumption then is that it all goes back to square one, you need to have a new public hearing and new vote, new consideration before that moves on to council. Is that correct?
So typically, we won't go back and forth in a discussion, but if you want to lay out your questions, I can try to address them after the public comment.
Those are my questions.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so in reference to that particular comment, the design overlay, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation on that. I believe it's still waiting to be considered by council. If there's any substantial changes made, then council could decide to send it back to us for consideration. I would defer to the city attorney as to whether or not whatever changes are being made are considered substantial. Certainly, we could look at it again if it's a lot different than what we sent forward to council, but I would expect those changes would be made by the council, maybe in conjunction with staff, but I don't have any other information than that. Moving on then. So as I mentioned, the first two items, the public hearing and rezoning requests have been postponed to a future meeting. Do we know the date for that meeting yet, Mr. McLean?
Yes, that'll be at the regularly scheduled meeting in July.
Okay.
Which is, I believe, the 23rd.
I think that sounds right. Okay, so we'll look forward to those at the July meeting. And we will move on then to item number three, a public hearing for the proposed ordinance amendments to Section 138-383, special uses in office district, and 138-388, special uses in the local business district. I know there was not necessarily an applicant, but there was an interested party in this amendment. Did you guys want to talk about it at all? Have any comments?
No, I don't think so. I think what we had previously discussed at the meetings have been represented in the ordinance, and we're anxious to see how the process goes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. McLean, did you want to give us a brief introduction to that?
Some revisions have been made to the proposed changes to both the special uses in the local business district and the office district. This was based upon feedback from the Planning Commission. Section was amended that would allow for licensing to be provided to the city through the business licensing process rather than the site plan approval process. It was brought to our attention that oftentimes, an applicant will be going through the licensing, state licensing process, you know, while a building is under construction. So that's, that has been amended. Language has been added, which addresses screening requirements, requires that the Planning Commission can require screening, you know, involving masonry walls up to six feet. I would think this would be applied possibly if a building is going to abut a residential district, but the Planning Commission kind of has the discretion to require that screening as they see fit.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wanted to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one will close the public hearing then, and turn it over to the Planning Commission for their discussion and consideration? Any comments from the Planning Commission?
I just have one. Just one, you know, in litigation, it's often argued that if, if a contractor or statute enumerates certain grounds, by implication, all other grounds, all other discretion is excluded. Meaning if the ordinance says screening and a wall, we might not have the, I mean, it might be argued that we don't have the discretion to go beyond screening and a wall when we're approving a special use. So, I'm not, all I, my only point is, if we're comfortable with this plus the state requirements, fine. I'm just sounding kind of a cautionary.
So are you suggesting that letter C would be changed to something that says facilities meet screening requirements that may be required by the Planning Commission and just leaving it at that without specifically listing what those screening requirements may be?
Well, you can list them. You could also consider adding plus such other requirements as the Planning Commission deems reasonable. Now, again, you know, is this going to ever be tested? It seems unlikely, but I just feel duty-bound to make this observation. You run into arguments like this.
Agreed.
So if there's anything that's on anybody's mind that we should require, we ought to, we ought to think about putting it in or making this a little bit more general.
That sounds like a fair comment to include something that whatever the Planning Commission might find as reasonable screening or something like that.
Madam Chair, or as, as an alternative, you could have language that says that screening will be required in cases where a building abuts a residential district. I mean, if that's, if that's the only time that the Planning Commission would be concerned about, about having that buffer.
Yeah, I personally think that would be the biggest concern. I don't know that we necessarily need to buffer these facilities from adjacent business districts. That doesn't make a lot of sense.
So the language could be modified to simply state that screening will be required when uses abut residential districts.
Could we add something to address Mr. Richardson's concerns, screening as deemed reasonable by the Planning Commission or something like that, to address that concern as well?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
The section C already says screening requirements that may be required by the Planning Commission, including blah, blah, blah. So I think we have it covered, you know, in my opinion. I'm not an attorney, but I think we have it covered. We're saying that may be required by the Planning Commission. So we already have discretion, but I...
I'm not saying we don't, it could be argued we don't have discretion to require screening. I'm saying it could be argued that we don't have the discretion to include any other kind of requirement because it's not specifically set forth as the screening requirement.
What kind of requirements are you?
Well, that part, I'm not going to get into because I think that's, if anybody on the commission has a concern about any other requirements, they ought to be thinking about it. If the state has its own requirements, and we are requiring that anybody that we approve is approved by the state, that may be enough. I'm just, you know, I'm just pointing out what can...
I agree.
What can be brought forth in the event of a problem, which we hope there's never going to be a problem.
Okay.
Do you under, do you get it? I understand.
Okay, so...
Do you have an objection to changing that, Mr. Smith? Just to...
What are we changing it to?
Just to include a reference to whatever the Planning Commission deems reasonable, as the Planning Commission deems reasonable or something like that.
Well, we every, okay, we already say that about a barrier, a screen.
Do we need, need it for anything else is the question? Maybe not.
The LARA licensing requirements are pretty extensive. Again, I come from a senior housing point of view, not necessarily childcare, although they're probably actually pretty similar, if you think about it. But they are fairly extensive in what they have to require to gain their license. So if we want to catch off phrase, it doesn't hurt, but I think, we don't know what those might be.
I would defer to the architects and the building designers for that kind of...
See, as I mentioned, as I mentioned a month or two ago, something like this going into an existing structure complicates it considerably because there's already, especially if it's a multi-use structure, because you run into all kinds of fire requirements and exiting requirements and things like that. So if you want to add a catch-all phrase, that's fine with me. I just don't know if it's really necessary.
The point is, we might well be okay until we think we want something beyond a screening and a wall. Maybe we never would want, maybe we'd never need to require that, but that, that is there that we just should think about.
Ms. Buckler?
So, this may be for Mr. Smith. Would LARA have anything to do with like drop-off or lanes for drop-off or pickup? Because we may want to include some requirement on that that is, you know, not in the, if there's not a lot of fair land here in Berkeley to build on, so raise something and build up or retrofit something. But an existing parking lot, like in some of the multi, you know, commercial strips we have, strip malls we have now, if we put a childcare in there, we might have to modify the parking arrangement or something to accommodate the pickup-drop-off, and this does not really give us that capability. So I think that might be one of the things that Mr. Richardson was referring to, and I think it's simple by just adding like moving D down to E and adding a D that says, you know, facilities must meet other requirements or reasonable requirements as dictated, you know, by the Planning Commission, something like that.
So with regard to the drop-off, at least it's my experience with daycare is that parents usually walk their children in, the small children, so...
Right, so they're just parking.
So, right, so they're usually parking, not necessarily dropping and going?
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Question, I think.
Mr. Murad, and then...
I'm looking at 6B.
Yep.
Which also says meets the standards of Section 138-391 and 138-392.
Yep.
And if you look at those, that covers a lot of the other items that...
May well be.
It does, okay.
Yeah, it does. So I think we are...
So we're set there. I think we're covered, okay.
So it's there, you know?
Ms. Kempner?
So I know, we've talked in past site plans that when it's a residential, abutting a non-residential, there has to be a screen wall. So I went looking through, kind of going, well, where is this? Because it's not in any individual district. I found it under the fence ordinance, and it says that there has to be a screen wall where residential meets non-residential property lines, but it also very, then describes that it has to be a masonry construction and a maitn, I mean, so it already kind of describes what we need to have.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if that plays into a problem, because in one place, we're saying it has to be masonry, but in this, we're saying it can be masonry or fencing or...
Yeah, that's a good point. So I would think if there was a resident who is having a daycare facility put in next to them, that if they prefer a decorative fence and landscaping, we would defer to that request instead of the screen wall that would be required by the ordinance, or would at least like to have the ability to defer to that if that's what the preference was. So that's a very fair point. It does seem like there would be a conflict there. Mr. McLean, would you concur with that?
I would think so, yes. I think that would create a gray area. I think it, I think it's important to be clear that we specify if we're talking screening, you know, between residential and non-residential, I think we need to be clear about, about it being a masonry wall.
So would the, what are the thoughts, I guess, on the commission on that? Would we want to have it just be the masonry wall as laid out in the existing ordinance, or would we want to have the option for these other things or whatever might be reasonable? Mr. Smith?
I didn't bring my ordinance with me tonight. Do we have the discretion in our ordinance, those that you have in front of you, on your Do we have the discretion of a masonry wall or, I don't know, the language, a berm landscaping things? A lot of communities do. I thought we had that in there somewhere, but maybe we don't.
That we could waive the requirement or change the requirement for the wall?
Do we have the discretion to change that to a landscape berm or whatever?
Some other...
Yeah, and I don't, like I said, I don't have it in front of me. Don't we have that discretion already?
Yeah, it's here. So I don't think so, because four says the screen wall shall be made of masonry construction, but it's buried, it's hard to find because it's in fences, and there's no other reference back to it.
I think we need to modify that.
We need to change our ordinance?
Well...
Update our ordinance?
In all fairness, ordinances are written in a very specific time and place for a specific purpose, so they don't catalog everything down the road, and...
The ability to waive.
Right.
They should be modernized.
Because I thought there was some passage in there, and that could be confusing us with 100 other towns or cities, that we have the discretion to make that change.
Yeah, just looking at it briefly, it doesn't, it doesn't look like that's in there.
They didn't have berms in 1973 when that was written, so...
So what is the wish of the commission, I guess? Do we want to be able to have the discretion to work with those screening standards, or do we want to default that it has to be a wall?
Well, I don't see this as any different than any other business against, you know, neighboring or adjacent to a residential. Most likely, it'll already be there, but in the case it isn't, I don't see how it's any different than any other adjacent business residential. So whatever ordinance says, may we refer back to that?
To the wall?
Yeah. And then when we rewrite everything?
Yes.
We do advance it a little bit.
A little bit in there so that it can be other types of things. Any other comments on that point? This seems to be a, Mr. Richardson?
May be advisable then, if we're going to stick with the fence ordinance to reference that section here.
That's what, yeah, that's what I said.
And if we're inclined to pass, maybe we could just vote on it, subject to making that change.
Oh, yeah.
Minor change.
Yeah, that's, that would be minor, yeah.
Maybe a condition.
Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Richardson's comment about having something added in there, I would probably prefer to see that added as well. Something, a blanket state, statement, something as well as any other reasonable requirements deemed appropriate by the Planning Commission. That way, if it does come up in the next...
So you're talking about just a general statement referring to reasonable requirements?
Right.
Yeah, the thing about the LARA, I looked at it last time, this was in front of us, and there's some very confusing language in those LARA regs, so...
No, I'm saying in addition to, not taking LARA regs out.
I don't want to, yeah. I'd be inclined to go that way.
Yeah, that would be fine, I think.
Just to add something in there, just so we can be covered if it comes up, and it probably never will, but as soon as we don't, it probably will, so...
Well, as a, as a special land use, we do have the ability to request some additional accommodations.
Sure. Right.
But I don't think it hurts to point it out. Any other comments on this?
This would apply to both, right?
Yes, I think the language was exactly the same.
Office and local business.
Yep, it would apply to both. So if there's no other comments or discussion, would anyone want to make a recommendation, a motion to recommend?
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
See, are we doing them separately, or?
I think it was written...
Written as one, right?
As one, yep.
Okay. I'd make a recommendation to, well, I'd make a motion to recommend the city council approve item five, an amendment to our, nope, I'm on the...
Four.
Item four, thank you. Amendments to Section 138-383 and 138-388, special uses in the office and local business I think that's what I said. With the conditions, or with the amendments that we made tonight.
Support.
Any other comments or discussion on that motion? Mr. McLean, could you call the roll, please?
Murad.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
Kapalansky.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our next item, this is an amendment to our Planning Commission bylaws. Mr. McLean, anything on this item?
Nope, just, this is a housekeeping item. To change our start time to 7:00 PM necessitates an amendment of the bylaws. I don't know, I mean, the Planning Commission has the option to amend it to, you know, not list a specific start time. You could say, you know, start time as determined by the Planning Commission. That way, if future commissions want to change the time, you know, we don't have to go back and amend the bylaws every time, but I defer to the good judgment of the Planning Commission on, on that.
Any discussion on this item? Mr. Smith?
Chairman, I'd just assume leave it at 7:00 PM. I just, I mean, put it in at 7:00 PM. I'd also like to mention on section three, number three, that the work session meetings also say 7:00 PM.
Yes, we do have that work session option available to us. Should we have additional business that we need to take care of?
And that should also be, in my opinion, 7:00 PM.
That makes sense.
I don't actually read this part.
Does anybody object to 7:00 PM, Mr. Patterson?
No, I was just going to add, I did receive an email from a resident stating, I think it may have went to everyone, about having meetings twice a month, but I just wanted to state that we have the option, or some people have the option, to always call a special meeting as needed. So it's already in our bylaws, just to clarify that. If we need the special meetings to deal with important topics or an abundance of topics, the chair can call those meetings, or vice chair, in your absence.
Yep.
Just wanted to point that out to the gentleman who sent the email.
Good point, so that in addition to the work session does provide some additional opportunity. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Historically, we, back in the day, we did meet almost monthly with work sessions. We were busy. It's been years. We've had occasionally, Mr. Murad, occasionally have a work session, and as stated, we can call, or we have offered in fact to applicants if they'd like to schedule a special meeting so they don't have to wait a whole month. We have offered that too. So between section, I agree 100%, between sections four and three below the regular meetings, we're well-covered. It doesn't make sense to mandate that we meet twice a month, I don't think.
Just a question on the work sessions. So when you guys were having the more regular work sessions, were those reserved for mostly ordinance, master plan-type discussions?
That was what we were into back then, yeah.
Okay.
It looks like we're heading in that direction again.
It appears that way, so I would say we probably will start getting into some work sessions again once things start moving with the ordinance and the master plan. But for now, our agendas don't seem like they've been too terribly busy that we can't accommodate applicants.
And again, like I said, part of item four, and we have offered, and some of you may have been here when we did, would you like to come back in two weeks?
Yeah.
So rather than wait a whole month, so we can offer that. The chair, chairperson can offer that.
Yes, we certainly could. Any other comments on this or motions to approve?
Motion to approve at 7:00 PM, I think, for work session and regular meetings.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. McLean?
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
Murad.
Yes.
Kapalansky.
Yes.
Okay, next up is the annual report. I assume this is done as part of our RC requirements?
No, it's actually done as part of the, I believe, the Planning Enabling Act. I know my predecessor was in the habit of typically around June, you know, just providing an annual report, which, you know, shows the number of site plan approvals, special use, you know, rezoning requests. So this was done in a, pretty much the same format as, as my predecessor.
Okay.
So if there's any questions on, on any of that, I'm happy to answer.
Are you looking for us to adopt it or anything this evening, or just an FYI?
Not necessarily, just FYI.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I just had one question, it's been brought up before. The property on 11 Mile that was sited and not supposed to be after we denied it, is there any update on what's happening at that property?
Yes, they've been in with some building plans. We're currently looking at the enforceability of that ordinance, given the number of buildings on 11 Mile that, that have siding.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you for preparing that, Mr. McLean. That brings us almost to the end of our agenda already.
Now let's figure out a way to just stretch the meeting out, so...
So liaison reports. Anything?
You want me to start?
I can start.
Go ahead.
So Chamber had a very successful art bash in, well-attended, beautiful weather, so I think it was their most successful one to date, so...
Yeah, it was, it was a great day.
Now they're working on plans for the Street Art Fest on the 13th of July.
Great.
So, all right.
Mr. Richardson?
Our committee also had a successful art bash. We didn't sell any art. We didn't sell any bikes either, although we had lots of people wondering if our bikes in our crowd were for sale. I think we rebounded nicely from last year, which was a rain-out. It was a good opportunity, not just to park bikes, but to talk to people who were stopping by. We had lots of literature on different topics available for people to take, and I think it was a very constructive activity. So the other thing is that at our last meeting, we approved a draft energy efficiency plan for City of Berkeley facilities and sent that on to city council. I believe that's on the agenda for the July 1st meeting. Is that correct? Thank you. So we're looking forward to council taking that up on July 1st.
Anything else? No? Okay. Staff and commissioner comments? Anyone? Mr. Mirad, anything?
Just like to wish everybody a happy and safe 4th of July.
I actually, regarding the liaison report, I'm sorry. I actually missed the DDA meeting this week. It had conflicts. It's a really tough one for me to get to, but I made it to a couple this year. But that's all I do say. Sorry I didn't make it.
No, that's all right. Any other comments? Mr. Smith?
Looking at our bylaws, and July crept up on us here, July, imagine three of us are up for reappointment. I don't think I am. But three of us are up for reappointment. I don't know who it is or if they're going to serve again. And also, at our next meeting, we select officers again, so those who are officers, think about if they want to retain their lofty positions. So just a reminder for whatever, so...
Thanks. Did we have reappointments, Mr. McLean?
Yes, there were three commissioners. I believe it was Commissioners Richardson, Kepner, and Shadle. They've been notified of their terms expiring. The city clerk has reached out to them, and I believe those who are seeking reappointment have done so through the clerk's office.
True, in my case.
Any other comments? No?
Other than La Salle, do we have anything else coming in July?
Off the top of my head, I can't, there's going to be a couple of site plans, nothing earth-shattering.
All right. Any update on master planning, when this is going to take place?
None at this time. I asked the city manager earlier today if he had an update on when we're going to be moving forward. He did not have a timetable for when we're going to be moving forward, but I expect in the next few weeks.
Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting's adjourned.